Good evening, welcome to the Thursday, April 18th, meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session since 6:15 PM. Can I have a motion, please, to reopen the public meeting? May I move? All in favor? Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Good evening. I want to start tonight, actually, by talking about disagreement. Whatever issue it is we're discussing, there are going to be disagreements. It may be surprising to hear, but we hear on many issues every day that we're only listening to the loudest voices in the room. And believe it or not, we hear that from people on both sides of every issue. We've spent a lot of time and energy this year working on policies and putting them in place to be able to address concerns as they arise, as they will arise, and be able to address them in a structured, fair, and equitable manner. For example, Policy 4005 addresses concerns around curricular materials. There have been a number of materials flagged since the policy was adopted, and every one has been able to be satisfactorily resolved with our faculty where that work should be done. We have to have a process and are not going to have knee-jerk responses to concerns around instructional materials. We have a thoughtful, structured process for reviewing materials, one that has resulted in all parties being satisfied with the outcome each time. That is what we will continue to do. Likewise, we are using our May board work session to talk about our process for vetting outside speakers to students. Our policies need refinement in light of a changing world. These issues are hard, but we're committed to doing the work and doing it well. I would also ask that when something comes up, as it inevitably will, please put away your jump to conclusions mats and let us try to resolve the issue. Tell us, and let us address it before trying to rile up the entire community, whether on Facebook or wherever. That does not help solve problems, it really doesn't. Maybe, please, give us the benefit of the doubt and a few minutes to address a concern before turning it into the next public feud. Despite what Facebook says, the five of us up here, not to mention the administration, are not incompetent, and we are working every day to provide all of our kids the best education we can in the most equitable environment we can. I want to take a minute to tell a story. And honestly, I try to leave my family completely out of the work I do up here, but I don't know. Maybe it will help if people understand that I've experienced some of this as a parent, too. Last year, well before October 7th, and the scary world we find ourselves in as Jews right now, my daughter heard anti-Semitic speech at school. It was the end of the day, as she was leaving to board the bus, to Hebrew school, actually, and she was quite upset and scared. She told the adults at Hebrew school who called the school and called me. I spoke to the principal, who handled the incident immediately and completely appropriately. My child felt safe and heard, and that the school took the issue seriously, as did I. And this is the first time that most of the people in this room, including people on this stage, are hearing about it because it was a building-level issue, and I let the building-level administrators do their jobs, and they did them well. There will be issues, and we will continue to address them and do everything in our power to make sure that all of our kids feel safe and valued as members of our community. Speaking of community disagreements, I want to say something about the SROs and their inclusion in the budget for adoption this evening. Everyone up here is guided, as a first principle, by what is best for kids, including most centrally, their safety. Just talking about the board for a minute, we're five intelligent, thoughtful people who are up here because we care deeply about our schools and about our children. We know that there are arguments both in support of and against having SROs in school. We've read the studies and the data on every side and angle of the issue. We've also read the hundreds upon hundreds of emails we've gotten from the community on this, more than any other issue we've grappled with in my time on the board, and there have been a few hot-button issues. We don't all agree with each other. Conversations the community doesn't see because school safety is rightfully an issue for executive session. But never once has any one of us accused any other of wanting children to come to harm because we know that everyone up here believes that our first priority is keeping our kids and our faculty and staff safe in our buildings. We may have different beliefs on how to do that and what's the proper use of funds to do that, and all of those things, but nobody up here wants harm to come to kids. The thought of it literally keeps us up at night. The community clearly does not agree. The number of emails we've gotten, both from people who want SROs and those who don't over the course of this debate, insinuating that at best we're indifferent to harm coming to kids, and that at worst, if we don't agree with them, we're asking for children to be killed, is appalling. Please stop. We've gotten some really thoughtful emails about research and fiscal responsibility and both cutting SROs and cutting other things to pay for SROs. We understand that there's a lot of disagreement on this issue, and honestly, it's not a straightforward question, especially when you factor in the cost. We've done a lot of grappling with the question of SROs, each of us independently and as a group, and I think we come to stronger decisions and better ideas through respectful disagreement and discussion. It would be great if we could try to do that as a community because I truly believe that there is not a single person, either up here nor in our community, who wants harm to come to any child. As with everything we do, each time we address an issue, we try to do better. Dr. Ackerman is going to address this in more detail, but if we do enter into new contracts with the town for the hiring of additional SROs and/or when we renew contracts for the existing SROs, we will work to make those contracts tighter and more robust in terms of our role in the hiring and vetting process and our rights to inform the community of any changes to staffing or coverage. At bottom, we went through a very extensive process of surveying the entire community on issues around school safety, and the overwhelming result was that our parents and our faculty want designated SROs in each building. We've crafted this budget seeking to be responsive to that feedback. Regardless of what happens with this budget and with this vote, we have to be able to move on and live and work and play and learn together. So I'm going to save my comment on the budget itself for after Dr. Ackerman's presentations, as we all will, and so I will conclude by wishing our families who celebrate a very happy Passover next week.
Thank you, Hillary. David, can you please pull up the community update? I'm going to start tonight by sharing a preview of our student belonging results, and we will be holding a webinar last week, but this was the center point of our superintendent conference day, which Adam's going to talk about in a moment, and it is one of our main strategic initiatives moving forward in the district. So for the past three years, we've been asking our students about three major topics in terms of like our work with them so that we can plan forward on how to best meet the needs of our students in grades six through 12, but really throughout the district because the program is scaffolded. And so I'm going to talk about what each of these subcategories are in a minute, but I want you to know that the survey is designed by a company that does norming across the nation against other school districts that take the survey to be able to make sure that it's valid, but also that the data that is returned to us is not influenced by the district itself, okay? And so just so you know, some demographic, and when Dr. Adam Schoenbart has his webinar, which he did last year, he'll go more into the impact of the demographics on responses. I just want you to understand that last year, we had 85% of the kids take it, and this year, we had 83% of the kids take it, so that's a really good response rate for us. And so if you look at our scores for all of our students that took it in grades six through 12, you can see on diversity and inclusion, cultural awareness and action, and sense of belonging, we're right in the middle. And you can see a small change in the first two subcategories and a little bit of a greater increase in sense of belonging, and I'm going to show you where that really resonated in the survey results. And just so we're all on the same, have the same understanding of what we're, the questions that we asked the kids, the first section really focused on students and how much time they spent with students from different races, ethnicities, or cultures, what their classes look like, do they hang out with them outside of school or in school, do they have any close friends from different racial, ethnic, or cultural backgrounds, how students are treated from different races, ethnicities, or cultures, and then how the adults treat students who are different from them. So that's the first category of questions. The second is about learning. So teachers and instruction in the classrooms, are they encouraged to learn about other students, to think about what someone else who's not like them is experiencing based on their identity, if they could have honest conversations with each other about race, think more deeply about race-related topics, how comfortable they are sharing their thoughts with other kids, how students have important conversations even if they aren't comfortable, and the frequency at which that is happening, do we talk about news events related to race in our classes with adults, and how do we help students speak out against racism? So that's the second subcategory. And then the third is really about being connected. Do you feel like you're understood as a person in school? How connected are you to the adults, to each other's? How much do you matter? And how much do you feel like you belong in the district? And so, in terms of Greeley, you can see that the greatest percent of increase in the subcategories was in sense of belonging, and it went up 7%, which is a good result. I mean, we still have to go, more to go, but like that was stagnant for two years, so some of the moves that the Greeley faculty has made, you can see an impact on that. So then the question might be, well, who responded in that way? And that'll be the information that Dr. Schoenbart will share in his presentation, and that's the information that Greeley will use to start digging in to know what students are feeling a greater sense of belonging, what students are still feeling like they're disconnected. And so those are the conversations the faculty will be having with each other, and then we'll be sharing that information out with our parents. And then you can see a marginal increase in cultural awareness and action and diversity and inclusion. But I think one of the things we really need to think about in comparison with the national average, our conversations in classrooms about diversity and inclusion are not aligned with that, so that's work that we know we need to do. Now, in the middle schools, you can see a little growth or a regression in some of the subcategories, and so we need to think about that. So here is Bell, and then here is Seven Bridges. And so we're talking with our faculty in both of those buildings about some things that they're thinking about, we need to do in terms of planning forward for next year based on these results. But I do want to also mention that in some of these categories where you see a little bit of a dip, we're either above the national average or we're at the national average. I'm not making like an excuse for the data, I just want to point that out because I think that's important. And then, of course, in the categories where we have a dip and we're below, that's an area of heightened focus that we need to pay attention to. And so next Tuesday at 6 o'clock, Adam will do his webinar, but we'll tape it and we'll push it out to families. But if anyone wants to participate in the webinar and ask questions, they can certainly do that. And then we also had the opportunity to survey our staff. So our district equity team went over those results, and then our school-based equity teams are going to be sharing those results with their faculties in their building because they're building-based, and then we'll post those online, too. We usually don't do a webinar for faculty, but we do post the results online for our parents to review as well. So I also want to share some highlights from Unity Day. So we had a great week last week, we had things happening throughout the building, we had high school students going down to the elementary schools, we had two presentations. We had a presentation at Greeley, a presentation at the high school, and then we had our shared readings, which were all very well received by our students. I did have to communicate out that I did make a schedule adjustment during Unity Day, and so I'm going to regroup with the BSU, I have a meeting scheduled with them next week to talk about like how they want to plan forward based on the schedule adjustment I made at the last minute. But we did have an excellent opportunity to support our students and support our belonging work that week, and so I want to thank the DET, and I want to thank our faculty and our students for helping facilitate this event for the district. And then I want Adam just to talk a little bit about Superintendent's Conference Day and some of the work that we did because it's connected to the survey.
Thanks. So April 10th, as you know, was our final Superintendent Conference Day of the school year. They began with all of our educators coming here to Greeley, and the first thing we had was a session facilitated by our district equity team and our building leaders where they actually dove into all the student sense of belonging data that will be presented to the community, as Dr. Ackerman mentioned. That first session also queued up our keynote for the morning, excuse me, which was Dr. Daisy Kahn. All of our faculty and staff went to the gymnasium for Dr. Kahn. Dr. Kahn's an award-winning speaker, an author, an activist, a commentator, and the founder of the Women's Islamic Initiative in Spirituality and Equality. The acronym is WISE, it's the largest global network of Muslim women committed to peacebuilding, gender equality, and human dignity. So Dr. Kahn presented to us on Islam, Islamophobia, her work as a leader committed to peacebuilding, equality, and justice. Following Dr. Kahn's keynote, the faculty went back and met as building teams to revisit their building student sense of belonging survey data, do some planning, make some connections to the keynote, unpack the keynote. And after that, we moved on to a luncheon that was sponsored by our colleagues in the CCT, which included a benefits fair during the lunch block. After the lunch block, faculty had a chance to take their faculty's sense of belonging survey. They also gave us feedback on district literacies, which we'll update the board on soon. That's part of our strategic plan to convert that profile of Greeley graduate into literacies, so we have some feedback from the faculty from Superintendent Conference Day on that. And then the day ended with some project time for departments and grade-level teams. And we do survey the faculty after every Superintendent Conference Day so we can get feedback on what went well and what we might be able to improve. And I'm pleased to report, 83% of our faculty, when asked about their overall experience as a professional learner, reported that it was either good or excellent, the other choices were fair or poor. So, you know, we got some feedback to make it even stronger, but overall, it was a good day in our last conference day for this school year.
Thank you, Adam. And so I want to share with you, since the third quarter is over, our incidents of hate speech, bias, and discrimination, so you can see how the matters that were addressed by the building administration over the course of the third quarter. Now, we have gotten feedback along the way here this year that people would like this to be a little bit more specific, but as we discuss, this is in the, our approach needs to be defined at the start of the school year, so we'll be talking about this with the policy committee over the summer, but I did want to share this information with you. And I also, I've been working through conversations with families about some things that they're seeing on social media or in the newspaper, and they have questions about, but I do want to remind everyone that, you know, we have privacy rights that we need to follow for students, and so the district is real limited in what we can talk about when issues happen. So, you know, people may have questions about some of the slides that, or the slide that I shared around the incidents, or might have some questions about some of what they're reading in the newspaper, and the district can't, simply just cannot comment. And so I just wanted to clarify that because I think people are well-intentioned and they want clarity, which is completely understandable, but there are so many regulations that we need to follow to protect student privacy that really limit our ability to talk about specific issues if they don't involve your child. And so as Hillary mentioned, I had also received some feedback around the SRO program based on an article that was in the newspaper, and so parents wanted to share with me some concerns about information they felt like they needed to receive from the district. And so in working through those conversations with families about our role versus the Newcastle Police Department, I did receive some suggestions in terms of moving forward as we prepare for potential contract negotiations with the town, so I did want to share them. I already shared them with Jim Carroll, that these are things that we're thinking about, that we need to discuss, and so I kind of lumped them into two categories. So the first is suggestions around additional layer of vetting that would actually be completed by the school district, conducted by an outside agency before the board would appoint an SRO to work in our schools. Clearly articulating the notification process and procedures, if an SRO is involved in certain matter or incident that occurs outside of the school district that necessitates a leave of absence, like for example, an arrest, because they're not our employees, they're contract employees, so like real language around that, the community is suggesting would be helpful. And then some kind of joint evaluation system that we would engage in with the town around SRO performance. And they also, I also received an additional suggestion to talk about in terms of whether or not we should think about having an independent evaluation of the current SRO program. So I did want to share that with everyone because those are, I think that's important feedback for the board to hear based on the conversations that I've been having. And then I just wanted to highlight, we have a lot of upcoming events between now and our next meeting, and so we have our concert, we have a huge music festival happening here on April 26th and 27th, we have celebrations after school around student identity, we have our petitions due for the Board of Education on Monday, we have STEM Fest here this weekend, so I encourage people to participate in the many activities happening throughout the district, and we're really excited on May 2nd to welcome our incoming kindergarten families to orientation. And so now Josh and I, and Jamie, Adam, and Andrew will be helping as we work through and share with you the budget that we are recommending for adoption, which has been adjusted since our first presentation in January, which was the basis of the thinking around what we were going to ask the board to consider. So I just want to begin by reminding the community that our work is really grounded in the board's three strategic questions around finance, academic learning, and social emotional learning, and that we are working towards building a budget to address five areas identified through our strategic planning process for continual improvement, and that those areas are broken down, and all this is online, by what we're focusing on as a district and what each building level is focused on in terms of improving our academic program for our students. So if you have a moment and you haven't had the opportunity to see these, we've sent them out many times, but I just want to remind everyone that this is the basis for our budget process. And so because of the way that our community really supports public education and how we have been able to structure our program, our students do very well here. So you can see that in terms of the state average, we're in the upper 90% when you compare us in student performance in ELA and in math with other school districts across the state. And these are the proficiency numbers on those state assessments, and then you can see our SAT scores are extremely high, our students do very well on the ACT, and then we have a number of students that score three or higher on our AP exams, which are all, many of which are all open enrollment. And then I just wanted to share with you, we're having, we're seeing significant success in our students in the application process this year. So we have our students, we've applied, have applied to a number of colleges, we have a lot of acceptances, and so this is just a snapshot of some of the places that our students are going. And so now we want to talk about like the sectioning and some of the programmatic items in the budget that we think are important for the community to understand as we prepare to present the financials. So Andrew, could you please just share the class sectioning?
Sure. On this slide, you'll see the projected class sizes based on enrollment that we anticipate having under the proposed budget. You'll see with the added three new teachers, they're on the right side by school, by grade level, on what we anticipate. And you can also see on this slide that we anticipate an increase in enrollment over last year at the elementary schools.
And so I just want to highlight for you what we've done in this budget, is we've really evened out the class sizes. Sometimes as you travel from the three schools, fourth grade is, is something, oh, that must have been the kids in the book. Sometimes as you travel between the schools, fourth grade's very different based on the demographics surrounding the building. So what we've done in this budget is we've evened it out so you don't see a pop in one of the grade levels just based on where kids live. And so, Andrew?
Sure. And then in middle school, here is our slide with our projections for class size by school, by grade level within the current proposed budget. You can see how that lines up. And then for the high school, and again, there's a very small increase that we're looking at in overall student population in the high school, and this is what we anticipate for average class sizes, and like I said in other slides, this does look a little different than the other schools. It's harder to schedule even classes in the high school, students have a lot of choice of what they choose in terms of electives affects other classes, so while you might see an average class size, class size can actually vary quite a bit within any individual course.
So now Adam is going to talk about instruction and technology.
So we did go through these as part of the highlights from the curriculum presentation and technology presentations, but I just wanted to highlight a few things. We are in full swing with our RFP for literacy, that review is ongoing at this point. We're producing a bunch of information for the folks that are doing that literacy review, so we'll be prepared to implement those recommendations. We have a Haggerty implementation plan, we're going to be doing a presentation to the board on that program pretty soon. And we've got handwriting without tiers, which we use in grades K through 2. We're going to roll that into grade 3, which includes cursive, and you can see some other things on there, the hydroponic spaces that we've built, built ongoing support, some exciting new courses at Greeley, and a ninth and 10th grade advisory program here, Greeley. And likewise, you can see some of the highlights for technology and their initiatives, new MacBooks for our seventh and eighth graders, 60 new ViewSonic interactive displays, those have kind of replaced the smartboards of yesteryear. We've got upgrades to our Apple TVs, Apple Professional Learning, 3D Printing Expansion, et cetera, all the way down to, you can see the Bell TV studio, we're supporting the technology part of that, that was part of a grant from the CSF, thanks to the CSF. And then we also have quite a few network and security upgrades in the budget, too, so we're adding some redundancy, some backups to our systems, some additional security to increase the capacity based on the demand that we see increasing throughout the district.
And then Jamie, would you like to go over the special education highlights?
So each year around this time, we recommit to inclusion and placing our students in the least restrictive environment. We take our responsibility for this quite seriously. And our priorities for next year are really based on what we see as the needs of our students. We know that our multi-tiered system of support is helping us to target students who need special education services and providing those students who may need interventions but not quite rising to the level of special education can get those, that support and those services as soon as possible and as soon as the area of difficulty is determined. Our two models of delivering special education services are ICT, which is the Integrated Co-teaching Model and Consultant Teacher. We want to continue to strengthen both of those models for our students. We are looking to strengthen the way that we support our students who need behavioral intervention, to do that in a thoughtful, intentional way. We want to always improve the tools that are in our teachers' toolkits through special education, and as we see a rise in mental health issues, we want to make sure that our psychologists, social workers, and counselors have the skills that they need and so that we are engaged in a process of training them in DBT.
Thank you, Jamie. I'll briefly go through facilities maintenance before I hand the clicker over to Josh. So you can see some of the highlights of the work that'll be happening over the course of the summer, projects that we're including in the budget that involve repairs and refinishing floors and fixing drainage and adjusting some of the lighting in some of the buildings throughout the district. And then on the next slide is our security budget, and we plan on continuing our current security personnel model. We have our, we're increasing the number of SROs in the budget from 3 to 6. You can see where we're going to add some electronic automatic locking systems over by Greeley and Grafflin to give access to students who are walkers. We have some security structuring that we're doing in the back, we're upgrading our cameras. And then we also add a district custodian coverage on Sunday to support our sports teams, also in anticipation of building a restroom out there. We know that families will want to use that on Sunday, so we've made a different model to be able to have people on work that wouldn't require overtime during the day, and then we have some blacktop work. So now I'm just going to walk over to Josh as he presents the financial aspect of the budget.
So today, we are presenting a revised proposed budget that is a 2.57% increase over this year's budget, as the previously presented was 2.94. That represents a 2.99% tax levy increase, and what we'll do is we'll show how, where we had some savings that we found in the expenditure side of the budget, and also some increases in the revenue side of the budget. So here, again, our updated proposed budget, $141,856,238 was previous, is our new proposed budget, which is the 2.57% increase, or about $3.5 million. So where did we find some reductions in the expenditure side? For our technology department, we're going to be delaying some purchases of boards and some administrative computers. some administrative computers. In our salary lines, we completed our negotiations of all four contracts that were up, and we had additional retirements between the last meeting and this meeting that has some salary reductions and savings there. We're reducing the position of Director of Elementary Education, that's a vacant position. And then we're also, after we have been scheduling the high school, we're able to schedule all students that selected their art courses with five teachers rather than six teachers, and the sixth teacher is a vacant position. So we're able to reduce that position for next year. Those have associated benefits of about $43,000 in savings, and I do know that that's not the full benefits, but because of the retirements, the benefits of the reduced positions is a little bit lower because our teachers get benefits in retirement. We also, with the addition of a special ed position that we have in the budget, we were able to find additional $20,000 in BOC's services that we're able to save in the special education department. Total reduction of that is about $500,000. On the revenue side, so we're able to lower the expenditure side a bit, and then on the revenue side, while there was a cyber attack in the government delaying the ratification and passage of the budget, the governor has put in the paper that they are restoring the foundation aid for schools that were harmed by Save Harmless and increasing that at the, at the 3%. So we're able to add that foundation aid back to our revenue side. In the past month and a half, we've seen a lot of conversation about interest rates holding flat. We were predicting that they were going to decrease, and our financial advisors now, after what the Fed's comments have been, should say that they're probably going to remain flat for a longer period of time. So we're able to increase our interest projection on our general fund. What that also did was increase the interest that we're receiving on our fund balance. So that's a fairly large chunk of money that's in savings that accrues interest. So in our previous presentations, we had stated we were going to reduce from $3.5 million to $2 million use of fund balance and put $1.5 million back into our reserves. We are still able to do that with our interest projections that we're receiving on our reserves. So rather than using tax money, we're able to use interest to put back into our reserves. So the increase on the revenue side of it is about $639,000. So the net change is $1.1 million in the budget. So here you could see, looking at our expenditures that we showed before, where our salaries was about a 0.88% increase, it's now down to a 0.31% increase. That's obviously the largest piece of it. We, and I'm seeing some bigger savings in technology, showing again our 2.57% increase budget to budget. On the revenue side, are the tax increase now is at 2.99% increase, and our state aid actually is up for budget to budget at 8.8%. And then the miscellaneous income, we see up slightly also, all again due to the interest savings that we're seeing. The projected tax rates, so we have, now that we have all the information, we're able to project out what the tax rates for each town are. The equalization rates have shifted a little bit from the 23-24 year, where Newcastle is at 14.8% and Mount Pleasant is 1.13%. So that does result in a 3.4% tax increase for the residents of the town of Newcastle and a 2.31 decrease in the residents of the town of Mount Pleasant for this budget. Here, like we previously did, you'll see tomorrow on our website, a tax estimator to estimate out what your taxes will, will be for the upcoming school year, for the school district budget. For the median household in Newcastle, the median assessed value is about 164,000, that's a $659 increase from last year's, from 23-24 to 24-25. And in the town of Mount Pleasant, the median assessed value is about $12,000, and that represents a $480 decrease in the taxes. So again, we have on there, on the website, on the budget website, there will be directions on how to look up your tax bill and then what to type in, and then you can have your estimated taxes for the 24-25 school year. Looking at what this budget related to previous budgets, the budget to budget increase and the tax levy increase, you see that it sort of has been rotating up and down, well within the range of where our other budgets have been. And here, again, we've talked about previously that this is an over the tax cap budget. Our tax cap this year, due to a variety of factors, including a no-growth factor, is 1.81%, or that would only be about a levy growth of $2.1 million, whereas the levy growth this year we're proposing is three point, about $3.5 million or 2.99%. Here, this is just a calculation to go on the website that we are required to do. It's the same as the slide that I previously showed, just with some more details in the calculation of what the exclusions are to the tax cap that we take out and put back in when we get to that 1.81% tax cap. I do think it's important to know that while the Chappaqua tax cap this year is 1.81%, based on the data that we're receiving from other school districts that are beginning to adopt their budgets and propose their budgets, our local school district meeting is confidently around 3% is about what the tax caps are of our local school districts. Similarly, the, our tax increase of 2.99%, the local school district median that we could pretty confidently say is about 3% for school districts in our areas. So this tax increase is right at where the median is of school districts that are peers of ours. A contingency budget, so we have a budget process. So this year, because we'll be going over the tax cap in order to approve the budget, at least 60% of voters, people who come out to vote, if they approve it, the budget is adopted. If less than 60% approve it, the board has the option to adopt a contingency budget. That contingency budget would result in about a $3.5 million decrease from this current budget, and there's a variety of things that then we won't be able to purchase. There's equipment in there, there would be salaries that we wouldn't, that we can't pay based on what the legal aspect of a contingency budget is, and that would be that. Or the board has the option to put up another budget vote that could be the same budget that was originally proposed, a lower budget or a higher budget. If that's approved, the budget's adopted. If that's disapproved, we're required to go to the contingency budget. Just some voter information, if the, checking your status, you can email Lisa or give her a call between 8:30 and 4:30 to be eligible to vote on May 21st, which is the date of the election, must be registered to vote with the district. Registrants must register to be residents of this for 30 days and 18 years of age or older. And then that can be done, you could register up until five days prior to the election, which is May 16th of 2024. Applications for absentee ballots for electing board members and voting, maybe a team from the district clerk, and there's information on our website about that as well. And the election here is on, so this is for, we have one seat open for the Board of Education for a three-year term. Those are due back on April 22nd, and the qualifications for that are there. And if you have any questions about running for the board, at least email or call Lisa. And then here tonight, we, is our budget adoption. Our budget hearing will be on May 8th, and the Chappaqua Public Library will also be here to present their budget, and the budget vote is on May 21st.
Thank you, Josh. So at this point, it, questions, comments, and then we'd have public comment, and then there's a resolution for your consideration regarding budget adoption. So that's the, that's the procedure here. So we're at the point where we're presenting to you our final budget, and so it's open to any last minute questions or any last minute feedback you, you have or statements you'd like to make about the budget. Now, I just want to thank Josh for his work on the budget and my team, because there's a lot that goes into this, to be able to prepare. And I also want to acknowledge the adjustments that we made based on community feedback, and I want to thank our members of our, our community who shared that feedback with us and asked us to make some revisions, which we were able to do working together. So, thank you.
I can start. Thank you, first of all, to everybody who's done a ton of work in crafting this budget and in revising this budget multiple times. We've been listening to all of the feedback around this budget and working through it because that's our job, right? And we've been trying to find places to make cuts and bring down the budget increase. We've heard from the community that, as initially presented now a couple months ago, it was too high. And as you saw tonight, there have been cuts to that. I've spoken over the last several weeks a couple of times why focusing, especially this year, on the bright line of the tax levy cap doesn't make sense, and why we're asking people to look at the overall increase and whether they find that reasonable. And I recognize that some people just fundamentally disagree with this, and as I discussed before, it's okay to disagree. But I think it's important to look at this budget, and especially of what Josh just presented in terms of what, you know, we can't disclose other districts' budgets until they're adopted, but we've seen some information, and our budget is not only in line with most of our surrounding communities, but lower than a significant number of them. And interestingly, in almost every other district, our budget would be tax cap compliant. We happen to have a very, very low tax cap this year based on the formula. So I personally thank you for all the work that everybody's done to bring this lower. We heard from a lot of people in the community that they felt like it needed to come down, and now it has, and I believe that this is a reasonable increase to ask of our community and response to the, the concerns and the wants of both of our community, our parents in our community and our teachers in our community. And these are both very important groups for us to listen to and respond to. Compared to pre-tax cap budgets, this is a very modest increase, and frankly, compared to many post-tax cap budgets, this is still very much in line and very reasonable. So we're also going to be offering as, you know, if the budget is adopted tonight, there are going to be opportunities, we know this is a more unusual budget for the community, we want to provide opportunities for people to come and ask questions and get more information. And so that's something that we're going to be doing over the coming weeks between now and the budget vote, and we encourage people to attend and to ask questions and to get more information. We want to provide as much information as possible, and I, I also want to take a minute to assure the community of something because I've gotten questions on this. We're not looking to break the tax cap annually. Believe me, this has been way too stressful to want to try to do this repeatedly. We are looking at this as a one-time fix, in part to fix a post-COVID fund balance problem and to respond to what have been ongoing requests from our community. And I can promise you that we don't see this as opening a door to looking at overcap budgets on a repeated basis. I know some people are afraid of that, that if this budget passes, that would empower us to try to do this every year, and, and I want to at least give you my assurance that that is, is not my intent in any way. So I, all that to say that I thank you guys, and I think that this is a good budget and I support it.
First, I'd like to thank you for your presentation, and I appreciate the effort in reducing the budget to lessen the tax levy burden for our taxpayers. However, I firmly believe we can achieve greater fiscal responsibility while maintaining quality of education and programs our students deserve. As a representative, my foremost priority is the well-being of the students in this district and ensuring they receive the best possible education. Equally important is advocating for the fiscal interests of our taxpayers. Therefore, with a focus on both students and taxpayers, and after much, much and careful consideration, I will respectfully be voting nay to adopt this budget. Thank you.
I also want to express my thanks to the team for all the work over the last several months. I think this has been a very thorough budget process, and I think we've done a nice job of balancing community responsiveness with our non-negotiable obligations, leaving some items for a future date, and at the same time responding to concerns that have been in place in this community for my time on the board at least. I'm also, I want to just do a special shout out to applaud Josh, this is his first go around at this, in this role, and I, I've noted the fervor with which you and your team have looked for ways to achieve cost savings and generate new revenue. So we're, we're so happy to have you in this spot, and it really is helping us to try to do the best we can for the students and our community. I also appreciate all the community engagement that we've had. I'd much rather have a community that wants to be informed, wants to ask questions, get answers, than one that's apathetic or lacking in energy. And we've certainly seen a display of energy in the past several weeks, or at least I have. And that's even when I am on the losing side of some of the arguments about what is included in this budget, and that is the case, not everything that I would prefer, my own priorities are not 100% reflected in this budget. But that's okay, that's democracy at work. When I ran for the board, I committed to looking for compromise, looking for a way to be unified in how we move forward, and I think this budget does that. I can support it because when you zoom out, it's a reasonable increase, as Hillary mentioned, it's in line with prior increases that we've done before, and it will provide clarity for the district to be able to move forward on issues that, as Hillary mentioned, have been important topics for us to be discussing over the last several years. To me, being unified as a community and, you know, finding common ground is more important than any one budget line, so that's why I'm in support of this budget.
I also want to reiterate, Josh, our appreciation. I think there's, there's sort of a, been a misperception the last few months regarding the budget that the inclusion of the SROs and smaller class sizes, we were only listening to one subset of the community. And in making these reductions, clearly, we have heard the voices of everyone, including our empty nesters, who I am 100% empathetic to their concerns and those on a fixed income, any increase, even, you know, nominal, is a hindrance to the bottom line and ability to make ends meet. And I, I think in my support of the SROs and in smaller class sizes and supporting a cohort of people that also support that, it gets lost in the sauce sort of, that I disregard that other faction. And I, I think in lowering the budget the way that you have, and we're really are in line with our other districts and our peers, I think we've shown that we are listening to everyone, and I want to thank you for that, Josh. And for me, as Ryan said, this is sort of, you know, he didn't get everything that he wanted in the budget. I think this is imperfect to a certain extent because we are breaking the tax cap, but I am in support of the budget because I've made considerations, and I think that what's in there and what you've presented is, is adequate, and I am in actual full support of it. And then on May 21st, democracy gets to work, and those in the community can vote yes or no, but you certainly have my support and my gratitude. Thank you, Josh.
I also want to thank the district for all the work that has gone into the budget and the adjustments that we've heard about tonight. I'm well aware that this budget has been a particular concern this year, that we face some unique challenges regarding the uncertainty around our state aid initially and this unusually low tax cap situation. In spite of these difficult circumstances this year, cap situation. Uh, in spite of these difficult circumstances this year, um, I really just look at our budget holistically. And with the addition of some of these budgetary reductions that we heard about tonight and the additional revenue, um, now that our budget increase is coming down from the 2.94 we originally discussed, down to 2.57, um, this increase over last year, which is down from the 3.2% increase in last year's budget, um, is really in the much better place for me to feel comfortable and good about it. Um, this budget increase is less than last year's in spite of increasing enrollment at both our elementary and our high school levels. Um, and the administration has made these reductions, um, based on both the board and the community's input, which I think is really important. The tax levy increase that was previously proposed was 3.94 and now we've gotten it down to 2.99. We are faced with a difficult calculation this year and our other districts around us all have a median tax cap around 3%. Um, we are really in line with all of our neighboring districts and this budget gets us both the smaller class sizes and more SROs, which is what many people in this district have been asking us for repeatedly. Um, I know that not everyone has the same viewpoint on these issues. They're very emotional issues. Um, but this revised proposal, I believe, is the best scenario and compromise in which we balance the community's desires with also fiscal responsibility. So I definitely support it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, that brings us to our committee reports. I have no committee reports. Does anybody have any? Okay, go ahead.
Oh, hold on, hold on. Uh, I just want to reiterate, the, uh, Sports Boosters Bash is going to be Saturday, um, June 8th. Uh, we have the Station Agents, a Chappaqua-based adult band playing there. Um, and it, what? I mean, we need to support our own. And, um, that's going to be Saturday night, June 8th at 7 o'clock at Captain Lawrence.
You mean a band made up of adults, right?
Yeah, did I say that backwards?
No.
Okay. Yes. Yes. It's, yes. Yes, it's made up of adults. The constitution of the band is adult members.
Okay. Um, I'm going to talk about wellness for a moment. Well, we didn't have a wellness committee meeting per se, but we did, um, have our tour of the cafeterias at both 7B and Bell. Uh, based on our last meetings review of the parent and student middle school lunch survey, we said we were going to tour the cafeterias, which we did. We toured the cafeterias, the storage and the food preparation facilities at both middle schools. So we'll be reporting back to our wellness committee at our May meeting, um, which at some point we will have recommendations for the district and the B O E based on that. Uh, in the meantime, Josh, uh, is working with our maintenance department at Bell to replace some ceiling tiles and to improve our lighting in the cafeteria. Um, he also plans to meet with our architects to review options, um, for that space. So we'll keep you posted.
I think the only other thing, we had innovation meetings earlier today and just to make sure the community is aware that we are exploring ways to, uh, revise on the opportunity to remodel some, uh, classrooms that will be used for business and economics and finance. And, uh, a small group of us is going to be touring some facilities of our recommended architect, uh, to do that work over the next two Fridays. So I'm just looking forward to doing that and we'll have some more updates later.
Great, thank you. So that brings us to the public comment period. We welcome public comment and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may also be conducted, contacted rather via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding comments presented. And I just remind everybody, please, no personally identifiable information during public comments.
Hello and thank you very much for your time. Um, David Sol, Peter speaking. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the elementary school SRO issue. Um, I don't care to get into the politics of SROs generally. I think that there are reasonable arguments for and against as discussed by the board. And I agree that reasonable people can differ. But what I want to focus on is the handling of the issue that has happened with the elementary school SRO. Um, and I'll split my comments into three points. Transparency, um, any ongoing risk and lessons learned. First of all, transparency. I, I'd like to understand why the community still hasn't clearly been told the background of what happened with the SRO. I myself heard about the fact that our prior elementary school SRO was accused of domestic violence with a petition for a restraining order against him a week ago at a birthday party. That application for a restraining order was filed in early February. Irrespective of whether the accusation is true, the accusation itself is a fact and has been public information since February. Finding out casually at a birthday party two months after this was made public seems to me not to be acceptable disclosure and raises a question about what else the community may not hear about. It is worth noting that some parents might also be concerned about safety impacts from this on an ongoing basis. Given that this is in the public domain, I would think there should not be an issue in telling people the factual background of the situation, or at least referring them to a place that they can learn the information for themselves. From what I'm told, the reason for not telling the community may have been related to legal concerns that to me seem specious. Any standard non-disclosure agreement would carve out information that had already been made public. Beyond that though, I would ask, what is the legal liability associated with not telling the community if something were to happen from a safety perspective on the follow? Um, what was said could have been and still could be as simple as the SRO won't be returning and any questions can be referred to the Newcastle Police Department. Anything to give people a heads up that the individual who was trusted with their children's safety in the school wasn't just on a regular way paternity leave or something of the like. Not having done that and not doing it now invites feelings of distrust by the community. It certainly has made me feel that way, although I know that's no individual person's intent. Second, mitigating ongoing risk. My question is what's being done, if anything, to address any risk from this individual at the schools? While the relevant individual may not be in the school in any official capacity, he's out in the community still, and it's not unreasonable for parents to wonder whether there could be retribution sought at a school from the individual. While we might reasonably think this is a small risk, we also fail to identify the person's violent proclivity or tendencies, given that there at least exists some possibility that the individual could try to gain access to a school again. Is there anything that we are doing or that needs to be done to think through and mitigate that? Third, lessons learned and hiring going forward. What can or should be learned in terms of best, hiring best practices for the SRO position? I know that the chief of police presented the hiring practices to the town board this week, but rather than merely say, okay, I have one sentence left. Yep. Thank you. Um, rather than say, this is what we've done historically and it was above standards, my question is whether there's been a critical evaluation of whether something could have been identified here or may have been missed and how that can be rectified for the future. I did not see any of that type of evaluation or self-critical reflection in the presentation on Tuesday, and I think that's something we should be asking for. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, President Grasso, members of the board, Dr. Ackerman, and administrators. My name is Andreas Baum and I'm the father of two children in this district. Thank you for this opportunity to express my very grave concerns about the CCSD's commitment to the safety of our children, as well as its commitment to principles of accountability and transparency. Let me be clear, I'm not here to discuss or debate the merits of SROs in general. Um, you are welcome to form your own opinions on that issue, but whichever way you lean, the facts I'm about to present, which David alluded to, should concern you. And I would not, I would be very surprised to hear that there are people on the other side of this issue, people who oppose transparency and accountability. Over two months ago, the SRO assigned to our elementary schools was placed on leave following his arrest on serious charges that included third-degree assault, second-degree unlawful imprisonment, criminal obstruction of breathing, and perhaps most relevant to the parents in this room and in this district, endangering the welfare of a child. The SRO was replaced with nearly a notice that the SRO is, and I quote, "is on leave," not "has been placed on leave" or "has been placed on administrative leave pending an investigation into allegations of domestic violence," pardon, "and endangering the welfare of a child." To this day, despite calls for transparency from several members of the community, neither the NCPD, the town board, nor the CCSD has made a single public comment on the causes of the officer's suspension. That includes tonight. I have had meetings with several members and representatives of the Board of Education and asked them why this has never been disclosed to parents. I've received conflicting responses, ranging from "it was not our place to disclose because he was not our employee," to "we cannot legally disclose this information because the rules governing employee relationships are very strict." I should note that this information is contained in public court records. And perhaps the real reason is that the Board of Education was worried that this information might influence our votes on the pending budget that calls for an increase in SROs. Just as importantly, neither the CCSD nor the NCPD has expressed any real commitment to examine what went wrong and formulate plans to prevent us from accidentally placing an armed man with violent predilections on our children's campuses. Tonight was the first time I heard any public statement suggesting that the CCSD is contemplating changes to the contract with the NCPD. I welcome those statements and I hope that those commitments will be only the first steps of self-reflection. Yet even here tonight, there was still no mention of this SRO, his arrest or his suspension, which gives me little hope that these changes will promote transparency. The chief of police has expressed, yes, may I request additional time? Thank you. Uh, the chief of the police has expressed that the SRO in question was an excellent officer and an exceptional SRO, and has confirmed that he intends to make no changes to the hiring or vetting processes for SROs. During a town board meeting this week, he expresses with, his view that the NCPD is not like the NYPD. It's a small force and he knows every one of them. How well did he know this SRO? Of course, no mention of the SRO or his arrest was made during that meeting. In my conversations with representatives of the Board of Ed, the CCSD continues to disclaim any responsibility, claiming it is neither responsible for the vetting of the armed individuals it deliberately places on our campuses, nor responsible for informing the community when incidents like these take place. This is unacceptable. The Board of Ed must commit to transparency, must commit to accountability, and must take appropriate measures to examine what went wrong and come up with a plan for how we can prevent it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is John Garfunkel, father of two kids in the schools. Um, just wanted to thank you for the prior speakers who came up. I would say I do think the board, I do think they did act, uh, board and the district did act quickly at least in responding to the NCPD update. So I, I was, when I read that, I was grateful for that. Uh, I also thank Josh for presenting tonight and coming up with some cuts. That was appreciated. Uh, but you know, when we look at other districts that you brought up, comparing the numbers, we also should look at process. Uh, I had a look today at what, how Scarsdale's handled it. Scarsdale's actually going over the budget tax cap too. Scarsdale's a similar community in some respects to us, makeup, but there is one aspect that's different. They have a PTA council that has a budget committee that works on the budget with the board. They completed it a month ago because they had buy-in from the community. They were able to answer these questions. So this is not strictly a question for the board, but it's really for the community. Is, is this where we want to do? Could we consider having PTA parent involvement in this going future? So we're not up at the 11th hour here. I think our problem here, we still have a problem of trust. I brought this up at the last board meeting I spoke at. We have trust when, I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Ackerman, when you refer to a speaker's cancellation as a schedule adjustment. And we just had parents talk about lack of transparency. That, I, I don't know. I, I, you know, I heard about this issue. I, I don't know the speakers very well. You said you heard the parents and, you know, you respected their concerns, but you recognized them, but you didn't say the concerns in the email. And now this is referred to at this meeting as a schedule adjustment. Um, and we look at what we read about the lawsuit Monday. I know you can't answer questions about it, but this gets to who we are. This is like, is our zero tolerance going too far? Are we making the right decisions on behalf of the community that's going to lead to either a lawsuit, which doesn't look very good for the district based on what we've read, or a settlement? So we have these challenges. I think we're still in trouble with, despite all the cuts, we're still going over the tax cap and we are still putting armed guards in schools where we don't need them. It was a, it was a flash reaction last year to a swatting event, which more armed guards wouldn't have prevented. We have had issues in our schools of kids making threats. These have been found before anybody came to a school because we have a tight-knit community here, because we have a community that's able to catch these things as we see them. Armed guards don't solve the problem. I'm approaching, can I have another minute? I'm approaching my time, please. Thank you. We have, uh, you know, the, the rate of a mass shooting at school seems like a lot. It's still, the odds are one in 100,000 across the country. In the Northeast, we ha, we don't have a culture of guns. It's one out of 200,000. It's half that. Uh, the one school we almost could compare to another suburban school when we look at Parkland in Florida. That was, you know, similar sort of community. Um, I hope you read, I'm sorry I didn't bring it, the Atlantic Magazine a couple of months ago, front page article. I hope everybody reads this. How to Stop a Shooter, about the cop dubbed the coward of Broward there. And the thing is, we don't have Jack Reacher and Detective Olivia Benson in one person. They're two different people. The people who can stop active shooters are not going out for school positions. They're working on New York State SWAT teams, Westchester County SWAT teams. We won't have that. It's a false sense of security. We are spending money we don't have on things we don't need. And we need the board to be a little bit more active in recognizing that. Thank you.
Okay, that brings up...
First of all, thank you everyone for your time this evening and your hard work. I know that a lot of you guys are here in volunteers. Um, look, I, I think this, um, I'd like, yeah, sure, Eli Benson, I have one, one child right now in, uh, in Roaring Brook. Um, I think the school right now, as, as regards to the antisemitism, which I've come up and spoke before, I think the school's made a lot of good progress. Um, particularly when I compare it to universities in my alma mater. Um, so, you know, I want to say thank you. Um, that being said, I think that, that doesn't mean we stop from the progress that we've made. Um, you know, there was one incident that, that happened over the past, over the past week, um, the Unity Day speakers. And I think it's an opportunity for the school to really investigate why that happened and why, you know, I think, I think the school understands why so many families were horrified by the speakers who were going to speak. But also I think it's important to identify the people that were responsible for selecting those people and holding them accountable. Um, and if it was, you know, figure out whether it was done intentionally, unintentionally, I don't know, but there should be an investigation and a look to see, you know, to help, to hold people accountable. Um, the second thing I would say on a more positive note is, May is, um, is the Jewish Heritage Month. And I think would be a very positive development if the Chappaqua School System did something similar to the Black History Month, where it made, uh, you know, a recognition of all the Jewish Americans who have had large contributions to American society, especially with what's going on in Israel and a lot of the anti-Jewish sentiment, the anti-Jewish sentiment right now. So I think it's very easily, easily done. Um, you know, it doesn't have to go overboard. I'm speaking to the principal at Roaring Brook tomorrow about it at 10 o'clock. Um, and I would highly encourage that all the schools take a look at that. It's, it's coming up in May. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the end of public comments.
Hillary, can I just?
No, all right, well.
Yeah.
I was watching on Zoom and I just walked in the door. Uh, my name's Alicia Spillman. And just a minute, sorry. I have four children in the district. Our district needs to take measures to prevent targeted violent attacks while also taking measures to address the rise in mental health struggles. In my work, I'm part of my building emergency response team and threat assessment team. I have a deep understanding of school safety. There is important work to do to keep our schools safe, but SROs are not the answer. There have been numerous occasions that the district has taken parent input and used it alongside solid, thoughtful, evidence-based practices. Phonics First, Wilson, DBT, I heard you mention Hagerty tonight. All of those are research and evidence-based programs. Thank you for working to implement these programs. SROs are not research and evidence-based. I believe I believe it would be negligent for this district to put guns into our schools. Already several, several speakers have discussed the arrests and charges of the SRO that was at the three elementary buildings. You probably also know that armed adults frequently mishandle their guns in schools. Gifford, Gifford Laws Comprehensive Analysis finds that there have been nearly 100 publicly reported incidents of mishandled guns at schools in the last five years. For example, March 5th, 2020, a school security guard unintentionally shot a school maintenance worker in the eye while showing him his gun in the school parking lot. And November 12th, 2018, a school resource officer shot and killed himself at a school when students were present. The U.S. Secret Service's 2021 report averting targeted school violence largely focuses on the behaviors exhibited by students who plan to carry out school shootings. The report emphasized that targeted school violence is preventable when communities identify warning signs and intervene as necessary. After-action reports have identified that 100% of the time in the past 10 years, attackers that targeted schools exhibited warning signs. 81% of the time, prior to a firearm attack, the shooter told someone. 70% of the time, a person who died of suicide told someone or gave warning indicators. Threat assessment is extremely important. A community of connection and belonging where students trust staff and staff is trained to see warning signs is essential to catch kids early and give them the support they need. Adding armed gun, adding armed guards to our schools is not prevention. There is absolutely no evidence to support their effectiveness. Instead of talking about adding armed SROs to our schools, let's talk about the biggest crisis facing our kids, the rise in mental health struggles and the rise in suicide rates. How many shootings have there been in Chappaqua? Zero. How many suicides have there been? Anecdotal evidence reveals at least three students and one adult in the past six years. Does this make you uncomfortable? It should. We need to start talking about this. We need to look at the needs of our community and set them as a priority. As pointed out in our PPS presentation on March 13th, that the needs of our kids with anxiety and other mental health-related issues, like, one more sentence? Other mental health-related issues continue to arise. Our district needs to be focused on research-based solutions to the real problems we face. Thank you.
My name's Ingrid Scholz, and I'm a parent of two children in the district. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I want to speak a little bit about SROs and the experience, closer to the mic. I want to speak a little bit about SROs and the experience the district has had this year. So just to be clear, in this calendar year, 2024, 25% of the SROs in Chappaqua schools have been arrested on numerous charges, including endangerment of the welfare of a child. I'm going to read some lines that are from a public document, the application for a temporary extreme risk protection order dated February 5th, 2024. They're disturbing, so if you have children listening at home. These are some of the allegations, in case people are not aware. Respondent dumped water on the victim's face while she was feeding an infant. The victim attempted to leave, at which time respondent grabbed the victim by the hair and dragged her back inside the residence while she was holding the infant. Respondent then shoved the victim to the ground and began punching the victim on the head, and then placed his hands around the victim's neck, obstructing her breathing. Respondent prevented the victim from calling 911 by taking her phone away and stating he was going to kill the victim. Respondent made statements about leaving and shooting himself somewhere else. Respondent also made a self-shot video stating he was going to kill himself. To be clear, this is the person that the district hired to carry a gun in our elementary schools. And yet, the only changes that appear to be contemplated, based on comments this evening from the administration, are that we might adjust the contracting process with the NCPD. I hope, when you say that you're going to discuss rights to inform the community, you are not suggesting that you need permission from the Newcastle Police Department to speak with CCSD families about the safety of their children in our school buildings. That would be shocking. I was grateful for Dr. Ackerman to take time to speak with me on Monday, and I really appreciate the thought that she had in taking that time, because I took almost an hour of her time. But I do want to report that on Monday, I asked her if there was a safety plan, if this individual came back to campus, where he was, by all accounts, very well-liked by parents and faculty and students. She told me there was no safety plan. Not only that, she does not believe the district can ban this individual from campus. Is that the position of our Board of Education? Now, I signed a petition last year at some point saying that we should look into SROs. And I have to say, I have since changed my mind. Personally, I feel very strongly the other way. But I echo other speakers when I say that, yeah. One sentence to close, please. I echo other speakers who have said that it would be truly appalling if the Board's position and the administration's position was that this community does not deserve transparency and accountability about the safety and security of our students. I think we should all agree on that. And the fact that we still have not heard anything, almost complete silence from the Board of Education, except for some of Hillary's comments this evening, that I think referenced this maybe, is, is shocking and appalling.
My name's Michelle Jacob, and I have three children, one currently enrolled in elementary school, and, you know, knows the SRO issue that people have been talking about this evening. First to start, I just want to thank everyone. I echo what everybody said. I know you guys, working on volunteer basis, staying up late at night, and taking a lot of attention to community concerns. I just want to echo a lot of the concerns I've heard here. I'll be short, but I'm very concerned, as a member of this community and school district, about the transparency behind what happened with the SRO, for all the reasons that were already said and I won't repeat. And concerns about the SRO in general. Here at this budget meeting, you're asking to increase your SROs from three to six, and yet I have so many questions about what has happened over the last year. You know, it started with an emotional reaction a year ago to the calls that happened across the area, you know, in the schools. And from my perspective in the community, there was little disclosure, analysis, or even attempt to research what it would be putting an SRO into the schools. It was a Band-Aid to add, to make us all feel better. And I'm not saying it's not the answer, but I think we need to think longer and harder about who we're putting into our schools and why, and what we're spending our money on. I think that, to date, I haven't seen any evidence showing that an SRO is going to help deter, detract, prevent a school shooting. And what we have seen to date is evidence showing that there are an added risk to the students in our schools. One of them recently, as everybody has mentioned here, committed domestic violence and endangered an infant. So what I would like as a community member is an analysis, an approach, and some thought, and some disclosure to some more information about what their role is, what the process is for vetting this individual, and what training they receive. You know, what is their purpose in the schools? What are they doing on a regular basis? And what are they doing if there's someone suspicious or a school shooter? I think, I think knowing and understanding that might help bridge this gap between the community and the district and the Board, and help us feel, you know, a little more educated about what's happening, what we're spending our money on, and who we're putting in the schools with our children. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Barrett Flom, and I have a child in the district. I would just like to remind the community, because they've made it clear that they're voting to adopt this budget, that you, the community can vote no, vote no, in May, vote no for an over-tax-cap budget, to spend over $1 million on armed guards in our schools when there is not evidence supporting that. There's not evidence. And there's actual evidence in our district that it's creating an unnecessary risk. If there are concerns about security, you can look to the security audit and be guided by the professionals that have indicated what we should be doing and where there are holes. Armed guards are not the answer. Please vote no on an over-tax-cap budget for more SROs, especially when there was a reference to compromise. This is a compromise budget. I'm happy to adopt it because it's a compromise. There's already been a compromise. There was a compromise last year when you hired roving SROs. That was already additional SROs. That was already additional money that could have been used in our school's budget for teachers, for books, for mental health care professionals, for threat assessment training, all things that are more important than armed guards in our schools. Vote no.
So that brings us to the end of the public comment period. Does anybody up here want to respond in any way?
I think this, this goes back to how you started the meeting, Hillary, and I, I am not a dogmatic person by any stretch of the imagination, so I am totally understanding of the reasonable arguments for and against SROs. And I'm willing to have those conversations in a really, you know, respectful manner. But what I am not willing to do is to sit up here and have, what was your, Andreas? For you to come sit up here and say that there's been no self-reflection that has occurred, that might be your opinion. I have had zero sleep-filled nights since the day I found out about the officer in question, because my two children were inside of the building where he was working. And I have been a staunch supporter of this program since day one. In fact, I ran on, this was one of my premises. And the moment I found out about that, I said, well, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe this is not the way to best keep our children safe. The problem I have with you saying that is, it's almost like I am so ingrained in this one theory that this is the only way to keep our kids safe, that I am putting everyone else's child at risk. That is not what's happening. I literally stay up at night, every single night, thinking to myself, is this the best decision that I'm making? So I have waited consistently from that day until now. And I will approve this budget because I do believe that the risk of having an SRO, the reward of having that SRO in the building outweighs the risk. Everybody has made mistakes in their life. This officer in question, I agree with Chief Carroll, I thought he was an exceptional SRO. So that also makes me think, is my judgment flawed? Because what he did was reprehensible. But do not come to this meeting and then intimate that the five of us have just cavalierly said, well, you know what, we're going to adopt this budget, and we're going to force SROs down the community's throat. That is not what is happening here. I believe that our kids are safer with SROs in the building. Will we reexamine the way that we vet them? And we will work hand-in-hand with Chief Carroll? Yes, we will. And that is something that I have thought long and hard about for the last two months, every single day and every single night. So please, afford us the respect and the public service that we are doing, that we're not just up here to collect our $0 paycheck.
Can I also add just some clarity? Safety plans are for staff and for children, right? So adults who don't belong here are not allowed on campus. And so I do want to clarify that, so people don't get the, like, a misunderstanding about language around how we operate here as a school district. I do want to thank everyone for their feedback, and I got some great suggestions from some of the speakers who spoke tonight, as I had conversations with them. And listen, we're going to move forward, we're going to do better. And I hear the concerns about communication around this issue, and I hope you can understand the complications around communication when people don't work directly for you and they're not your personnel. But I hear you, and I'm thinking about, like, some of the language that I used in my letters, and if that could have been adjusted to respect the relationship in, in this particular situation, given the circumstances that we were dealing with, which are really complicated. Because everyone who's in the building works for me, except for the SROs, right? They work with us, but they work for Chief Carroll. But I, I hear you. I understand, and we're going to move forward, and, and if we are in a position where we're adding those SROs, Jim and I, and I'm sure both Boards are going to be working together to really process out some adjustments that we can think about in terms of contract language, based on suggestions given to me by people sitting in this room. So I did want to share that. And I do take your concerns seriously, and I, and I thank you for bringing them to me directly, because that I also appreciate. So thank you.
And to Dr. Ackerman's point, because he does not belong in our buildings, if he tried to come on campus like any other adult who should not be in our buildings, he would be removed. That is not negotiable.
Procedure for all adults.
For any adult who does not belong on our campus.
Does anybody else have anything they want to say? Okay. This brings us to approvals and ratifications. I can't see with my glasses anymore. Can I have a motion, please, for 3.1 and 3.2 together, which is accepting the minutes of the April 12 special meeting and the April 16 board meeting? Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to 3.3, which is the online banking second reading and adoption. We had a first reading of this the other day. Was there any feedback to the policy committee on this after the first reading?
Can I just, this is a pro forma policy that we need to have, that's a lot of legalese that we crafted with our attorneys based on the auditor's feedback. So I don't, I only anticipate there'd be any adjustments to this, but as we move forward and begin to operate within this policy, the, and we, we get some feedback from the business office or from anyone else who's interested in this policy, we can certainly bring it forward again. But it is important that we move on it based on the auditor's recommendation.
Okay, so can I have a motion, please, for 3.3? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Okay, so 3.4 is another second reading and adoption. This is policy 9040, non-aligned administrative and confidential staff personnel policy.
So we have a, a pocket of staff who are confidentials, whose increases are not predetermined by any contract, and so we'd like to make an adjustment to this policy that allows that to happen by tying the staff to one of, to the COSA contract, so that there's a predictability in our budgeting, and for our staff as they move into the next school year, so it aligns them in a negotiation process, which is appropriate. And then I, I would just like to add, Josh and I and Andrew have been working really hard on our contracts to, to push them out multiple years, and so you'll see another one of those on the agenda tonight, so that we can better prepare our budgets for the future. And so I want to, I thank both COSA, CSCA, and the CCT for engaging in negotiations in this way with us to help us better plan for the future, so.
So can I have a motion for 3.4? I just want to note, in case this is unclear to anybody, that confidential staff, confidential is modifying staff, not policy. This is not a confidential policy. There are staff within the district who are designated as confidential staff, so I just don't want, as we've had a lot of conversations around transparency, I don't want anybody to think we're passing a confidential policy, that is not what we're doing. Any other questions or concerns?
I think there was one edit we were going to make to this, right? Did we do that, Dr. Ackerman?
We did, yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's in blue.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that brings us to 3.5, which is be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the proposed budget and ratifies the property tax card for the 2024-2025 school year. I will move 3.5.
I'll second.
I know we've all had an opportunity to discuss this. Does anybody have anything further that they want to say? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay.
All opposed, please say nay.
I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I will move that we accept the superintendent's recommendations under 4.1. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I'll move that we accept 4.2 as presented.
I will second that. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting in a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. So preliminarily, is there anything that anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? Tonight's consent agenda is, we have a student going for the International Science and Engineering Fair in Los Angeles, which is exciting, and there are BOSI's contracts, CSE reports, which are routine, some contracts, and a, we are going, we are modifying an RFP and rebidding it regarding construction, and that happens sometimes if the results we get from an RFP or the proposals we get from an RFP don't satisfy what we need as a district. It's not uncommon for us to either modify the request for proposals or just put it out for a rebid, because we want to make sure that we're getting what we need in response to these RFPs. And as Dr. Ackerman noted, there is another MOA in the consent agenda, which is great. It's great that we're able to settle out all these contracts. So, good job.
Yes. Thank you to Mike Dabellus and his team.
So I think I just moved the consent agenda, right? I moved the consent agenda, could I have a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there is nothing under six or seven. Okay, so that brings us to eight. We can take the eights together. Can I have a motion, please, for 8.1 through 8.4, which is acknowledging receipt of the appropriation status report for March 24, the revenue status report for March 24, the extracurricular activity fund report for March 2024, and the treasures report for March of 2024?
Move.
I'll second. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Okay, that brings us to our notice of future meetings. Our next board meeting will be Wednesday, May 8, here at 7:00 PM. That will be the budget hearing, which is different from the budget presentation, and something we are legally required to do, and the library budget presentation, as Dr. Ackerman talked about, there were also going to be other opportunities to interact.
Yes. So what we'll do after the budget hearing is we'll push out to families opportunities to engage with Josh and I, and then with the larger team, but I want to have the hearing first, and then it'll be between the hearing and the budget vote.
And we encourage people to come and ask questions. And then, May 21 is the annual budget vote and election. Just a reminder, and we'll remind you a million more times, it's all here, it's not your, like, political polling places, the entire budget vote and election is all at Horace Greeley. And then our meeting after that will be the next evening, Wednesday, May 22, at 7:00 PM, where we do our 10-year teacher recognition, which is always a lovely evening. So can I have a motion to adjourn, please, at 8:44 PM?
I'll move.
All in favor? We are adjourned.